As you see, there's a unique is because there's a turnaround. Then there was a long way to reference to what text that was required, especially getting out of line seven with the line.
Mr. Garcia? Who's the developer? Okay, so we're asking, I understand the question here about the variance in the flat sizing. We're asking just, you know, what is, what are you developing? I'm understanding the lots, it's a requirement of what's going to go on with lots.
Single-family homes.
Okay, and that could be anything, so we could be approved on the whole of the park because a single-family can live in.
No, it can't, because it's not, it's not in the code. So technically, whatever I developed there has to fall within compliance with the city, and it's met all those conditions already. We've gone through the engineer, your city engineer, who looked at that and also approved it, based on the fact that we do follow the guidelines of the IBC and also HUD regulations. So it's really perfect, it's ready to go.
It's ready to go, but I mean... What's going there?
What's that?
Yeah, what's going there? I mean, the single-family homes is very broad as far as...
From the way that the floors were cut over in ordinance as it's set up, if they want to do a mobile home park or like first one like that, you would have to get one of those special use permits that we've gone through. The way it's owned right now is R1, making its own R1.
Right, R1.
That's, and I don't have to put a warrant in front of me, but I believe that's foundation, single-family.
Yes.
But we can confirm that, just to make sure.
That's correct. Well, that's what we're asking, and no one can answer that, if it's a foundation.
It's for the special use, yes. They have to go through that process.
If we're a mobile park... Is there going to be mobile homes going in there, or houses on slabs? That's the question.
There'll be houses on concrete slabs.
Slabs or pier and beach, or some foundation, permanent foundation.
Except when you talk pier and beach, you talk to mobile homes.
Uh, no.
Or large houses that sit on beach.
Right, see, a manufactured home would be sitting on blocks. No, this won't be on blocks, it'll be on...
Or recovery.
See, yeah.
What's your recommendation, Ms. Turner?
My recommendation is to approve this subject, the flat as put forth, and to delineate that if he wants to have mobile homes data, of course, or he'll have to come and get his special use. It's not just a criminal, the residential doesn't mean he can put those in it, and it will have to go through the PNC process.
Well, I don't think it would, it wouldn't have to go through the PNC, because, you know, it's basically going to be a mixed lot, you know, and it's, we'd be approving it, and anyone else could, I mean, it could be mixed, the majority of them could be, could be slabbed, and then...
It would still have to go back to the PNC to do that. So the purpose of what you have today, that needs to simplify that, so it's not big lot. They've worked very hard to tweak it. Mr. Heimer has worked very hard, and they're going to put in some sewer that's going to come underneath, they have to, or underneath ninety-seven, that the city will be inheriting, so it'll be real nice, and they're going to need to stay that we need to remember to get drainage. Because everybody's aware of the flood area and drainage, and we don't want the compound to be flooded. So Mr. Heimer has worked very hard, and they're here to make sure that it's engineered correctly, the license that they put in, and then once it's been certified by our engineer, we get to inherit that infrastructure. So we're excited about that, and actually, we can talk to the developer about future workloads or putting it through some improvement to the compound. The compound is, the building is based here, so that we can talk about working with, making some improvements to the compound, because I'm being negotiated better with the figure. So I do look in on that.
All of, all of those infrastructures, just like a single, just a, just as a residential subdivision has...
And it's only mobile units, or twenty, is it twenty twelve?
Twelve.
Twelve, so there's twelve.
And how many of these lots do not meet the requirement size seventy-five by hundred?
There's eight.
Eight out of twelve.
Eight out of twelve.
Eight out of twelve.
Three quarters.
There are two feet, two, two to five, so it's a very small bit, twenty-two, five feet. Each one's different, and as you can see, I'll never evolve by the side plane, but the ones on the back of cul-de-sacs, geometry, just kind of like the way it is, it's hard to get that nice square seventy-five by hundred. And they also put it on the front side because of text up requirements, so the ones that were closest to the street, they had to back up the shrink as well, because of text up requirements.
Right.
What size is the smallest one in the front, the little bitty one? I can't see the numbers on that.
What size is it?
The smallest one.
Those are block four, left.
Seventy-four.
Lot twenty-two?
Or... Lot twelve.
Lot twelve? Seventy-four foot. Maverick has custom vision.
It's point one-four-one acres. That's, it's kind of, it's a variable width because it's at an angle, so, but that's the smallest lot. The front is five, the rear dimension's fifty-five, the front is forty-nine point seven, however, it has that flare cut out, yeah, text up required. So it actually, if you carry that line all the way through the right wing, it'd be more like seventy.
Reincorporating the three C and E in this conversation?
In the conversation, and we'll have several of them on the floor.
I think my main concern is what it's going to do down, down line from, from the watershed, because if there are going to be, you know, slabs, then, you know, it's going to make the water flow a little bit faster than what it has this, you know, it's coming into, coming out towards that pecan park area, but...
Yeah, but it's, it's an open, natural flow area that, and we have disperated blocks, a rock rip rap, so it's been engineered so it disperses, so it's not a concentrated flow.
I have a question.
This drainage that crosses the highway is going to go underneath, right? And it's going to flow?
Right.
Or to?
Well, is it closing now?
Nothing is going to hold it back.
No, and that's so text up looks at, because...
We are, we are going to have to fix that. The city has to fix that, because y'all are not right.
Well, no, there's, there's no way, there's no significant impact.
Yes, sir.
If, if it's...
It's going to be going across. No, but it's going to be a wall.
It already does that, but what we analyzed was, the twelve, the increase in previous covers what increases runoff, but there's only relative to the watershed. Watershed is actually creating, not with noise, but it's pretty significant. So the runoff increase from just that two and a half acres is like half percent for the whole watershed flow. So the impact it has to the culvert is negligible.
I disagree with you there. There's a house in, what is it, Stanis over there, across the busbar, Texas, not okay that, but across the house, it's tearing up that house, and we are not doing anything about that. Text that is not...
Which home?
Ms. Lopez.
The neighboring house?
Yes, sir, same thing. So why are we going to okay this when I have seen that?
We, we analyzed that as well, because we actually shot a survey of...
I, I don't disagree on that, but where I disagree is what is going to happen the other side. There's not going to be a wall, there will, a retaining wall, that will hold up that, that, that wall, that rain.
No, that's, it's, there's no separation from like culvert to the home, but, so... Then it poses, I mean, that's one of the things that, that we had to get approved specifically by text like that issue, that specific issue, so...
In the, in the subdivision, it's going to be curved in, they do city specifications.
Sidewalks or sidewalks as well? Just all the infrastructure that a standard subdivision would have, new utilities, so moderning, sewer made, streets and drainage, so...
If, if y'all can do a wall on the other side of good drainage, I'll go with it. Not right now. I don't know how the council feels here.
If you want to go for it, fine.
What, what, what did you say was going on before that? You said that there's going to be some river rock as well as, basically to...
Disperse the blocks.
Okay.
So, as a, the channel, at the end of the property, the property line, that has the, that other structure, so it has those dispersed blocks with the river rock.
Which aren't in there right now?
Right.
That would just, y'all's expense, y'all will be installing.
So that disperses the flow, and then it's already, the low is already in direction of going directly to the culvert.
I'm going to make the motion to approve the variance on lot sizes on the flat for property located at thirteen hundred Hospital Boulevard.
Can I have a motion? Can I have a second?
I'll second.
That's a second by Councilman Gere. Councilman Castilla, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman, please?
No.
Councilman Mito?
No.
Councilman Gere?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, motion fails for three to two. Now we're going to go on to D. Well, if we're not approving this one, I would think the other two are no, right? No action? With D.
No action.
No action. No action on item D?
Now, do they have an option to come back to, to counsel?
You said do it if they want to.
Yeah, perhaps, you know, with maybe something stating... Everything's already been approved through, through text up, everything's been approved through the, through the city.
And what is the main?
That is not an issue. The issue is pecan park. Where is the, the, the water is just going to squirt in that part, and we are not going to have any control of that part at all.
You're, what?
If we have a wall and, and a better drainage, then I'll go.
If I may, Mr. Heimer from Burridge, you reviewed this, it's on the agenda for some other items on December level meeting. We can put this on the agenda, and our engineer can be here to address the concerns that you may have in reference to drain. You can be at that meeting on December eleven, and then also we can have him prepare a document for you addressing the drainage issue, so to be of how it's going to impact on the park.
My other concern is I'm not against a park subdivision, I'm still happy with the homes, but we just got this packet, you know, this week, and then, you know, we had some questions for you guys, you're answering questions about the lots, and then, like you said, I could hear from an engineer, because I don't think you're as competent, you know, explain to us that, you know, that that's not going to happen. So I could hear from, you know, Mr. Heimer or somebody else on the hot spot, we have no problem these guys going to die.
I think based on, on some of the information that I'm taking in is, we will probably want to see something more concrete that says no mobile homes will be in here, more slab on grade, you know, or more, you know, well, but even, I think it's a little bit more.
We can do that research to make sure we can reach the ordinances and references and requirements for this, and what R1 acts define, and hopefully I'll let Mr. Heimer know your questions in reference to, the issue of drainage, and have him be prepared to address any questions on December eleven meeting.
Okay.
And Mrs. Turner, a case study would be Mrs. Lopez across from the busbar, if the same thing happens to her, I have been over there to, with her complaint several times, and text up will not do anything about it, and it's after the fact. So we want to make sure that this does not happen in that area.
Well, I will direct Mr. Heimer to see him at the busbar. I'm not familiar with her problem or issue represented, but I'm pretty sure he was engineer familiar with that in reference to that case, if you want to make sure that that doesn't happen in this case.
Exactly.
And I'll make sure that he addresses that at December eleven meeting.
Thank you.
And Councilman Erich, to go to, to the issue you brought about what's going to be the installation there, since this is a variance, you can put conditions on the variance for great, and so that can be one of them just put in there.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So we'll read this next meeting.
Next, next meeting, April eleventh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to skip out to item thirteen, consideration and action to approve ordinance amending chapter eleven of the city's code of ordinances to implement an annual food safety inspection fee and establishing penalties for non-physical injuries.
Thank you, Mayor. On here, this is in your packet under three E. What this is, is this is the part that goes hand in hand with that interlocal that we agreed to with the county to have them do the food safety inspections, and as part of that, there was an agreement that the city would establish a fee so that we could remit payment back to the county for having their health inspectors come out and inspect everything. And so this is the ordinance is actually implementing that fee to go into effect for the next calendar year and start collecting that from all the food, from all the food serving establishment in town.
And all this will be served on a random basis, the inspection?
Yes, I believe that the, the county, I don't think they have a set schedule just when it works.
Well, right now, we're doing all the complaint-driven and reference to health inspections, but this is an annual fee. With this fee, they'll be expected at least twice a year, according to the apartment that was in your group for in local room, including. So they hired a new person in reference to do that, because when we started this process, Wilson County told us that they have more food establishments in the city of Forestville than they have in the whole county. And so they hired someone who started on complaint-driven, but what this is, is an annual fee of two hundred dollars per year that's paid, and then the lion's share of that, I believe in the original agreement, I believe it's eighty-twenty, something like that?
Eighty-twenty.
Eighty-twenty, so the county gets eighty percent of that, and the city maintains twenty percent as we process this term in application.
And, and these fees run concurrent with the county's fees as well?
The county's assessing the fees, he assesses the fees, and then we remit them to the county. Is it what?
Yes, and it's pass-through.
So they inspect for free and recharge for inspection?
They inspect for a hundred and sixty dollars a year for a standard, that we out, out, they can get the money.
I know what it's, yeah, that's part of the agreement, that, so actually, we have the authority to assess a fine, assess a fine, assess a fee, so that's what the city is doing, assessing the fee, and then we remit some of that fee to the county, and that's part of the agreement that you all approved, but we need to have this instrument to say, actually be able to implement the fee.
Can I have something to say?
This may...
Mr. there, and, Mr. Gersonia. You, if y'all can get rid of that conversation, if y'all can take it outside, please.
So that's what the, the staff has asked me, was to, the attorney prepared this ordinance so that it's put on the books so that we can officially charge the two hundred dollars for this annual fee. It's annual, starting in January, we're going to be notifying all of the establishments. Please remember, this is anybody who sells perishable foods, so it's restaurants, hotels, schools, those type of establishments that sell perishable food.
Does any of you feel a little hard things, and would you go?
Yes, ma'am, because anybody who sells food, anybody who sells perishable items, the HEB Express and the HEB itself.
Anybody that's subject to health inspection?
How about the food, the food stands that are on our way?
That's technically our perishable food, but we're going to be looking at some of them to monitor them as well. But they did get a permit in reference to allowing them to sell, and just solicit.
If they sell like three of pies and nachos, though, would it be perishable?
Yes, you have a special, well, I think there's a, there's a truck or something up there, I want anyone... Yes, ma'am, that included, even, I know we have a town, Mindy, help me out, if there's this one ice cream truck, correct?
One.
Even the ice cream truck.
That's one, yes.
There's only one in other way.
And also I have a question. During this time of the year, individuals go out and sell tamales, what about them?
Individuals wouldn't be subject, because you're not in establishment that's subject to health inspections by the county.
That's a different type of permit.
That's a solicitation, it's the same one as the first state.
And that's, and that's the same permit as, as the vendors of peanut festival time, or are they subject to the two hundred?
Along they say mine, it's a different fee, it's a different, it's more of a temporary, this is more for establishments.
Okay.
Okay, this, this is, the two hundred dollars for establishments, but we have a special fee schedule in reference to your agreement, in reference to the peanut festival, in reference to those solicitation terms, it's a different fee.
So how does that consider, I mean, it's basically the wheels on wheels, you know, that, how does it apply?
Well, wheels on wheels is actually expected because they have a kitchen that they serve out of, and they are, and they've already voluntarily, already, they pay themselves county to have them come over and respect, produce.
Even if it's, if they're selling out of their home, they even come in?
Unless they're operating as a business. If they're operating as a business, then they'll need a permit. If it's, you know, your grandmother at Christmas time makes twenty dozen tamales and maybe is around the bottom out.
You know, my brother has it in his box, and I just want to make sure they're doing it legally.
Yeah, they're not subject to it.
I have a question. How many establishments are in the city? And, excuse me, and do we have any jurisdiction on ETJ?
Our jurisdiction would stop at our city limits, it's just for city, inside the city limits. Right now, for restaurants, we've counted, it looks like about a hundred and fourteen, I mean, we're counting all the hotels and the schools, but we have about a hundred and fourteen food establishments that we are aware of.
And a couple of gas stations.
And a couple of gas stations as well. So the number's growing, we are, we've never had this before, and so we're definitely taking it, making sure of that. Here's something like White House Cafe that was operating, no longer operating, but it's still on our food list, so we're going to purge that list, and we will be sending out a notice to all of them in reference to that.
And do you think that's a good, a bargain, eighty-twenty?
That was what was in the agreement that...
That's already passed and approved, like, if this ordinance doesn't pass, then the, then the city has to pony up a hundred and sixty dollars per establishment every year.
So this one is big.
Because we've already agreed to pay the county a hundred and sixty dollars per establishment per year under that interlocal that we've already agreed to. So this is to create the fee to recoup that from the establishment or support of the city.
And now, we have one of our county inspectors, health inspectors, if you want to. I personally want to thank y'all for joining us in this effort, because I know y'all did a little good job at beginning building.
It's been interesting.
But thank y'all for working with us. Now, good to go.
I'm going to make the motion to approve the ordinance amending chapter eleven of the city's code of ordinances to implement an annual food safety inspection fee and establishment for non-compliance.
Okay, motion, can I have a second?
We have to read the ordinance, or the caption of the ordinance?
Do you like to read it?
What's the one, what's the one?
Do we have, do you want to run with this number?
I think it'd be best to have it in the...
Now that, now that, if it's, the reason why there's no ordinance numbers on these is because if one of these doesn't get passed, then you don't want to skip from ordinance nine to ordinance eleven, and there's no ordinance ten for twenty-fourteen. So they were going to be given ordinance numbers after passage to make sure that they were approved.
Can I have a second on this? I have a motion.
My second, the motion?
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Rodriguez, second by Councilman Nieto. Councilman Castilla, how do you vote?
I need to, that would, that would read the caption.
Yeah.
First, going to get some citizens' comments for you, how about that? Is anyone in the audience have anything to say on this?
I'd like to approve the ordinance amending chapter eleven of the city's code of ordinances to, or ordinance of the city of Forestville Texas amending chapter... That's what, yeah, that's right.
One eleven.
This is...
This one's supposed to be one eleven.
It's one eleven.
And that's, that's different than the...
Yeah, but the, the difference between this and the variance is this also goes there to say exactly what it's amending on there, and...
Well, there's a difference, chapters in the, from the agenda to the, to the ordinance.
It's Legal's opinion on this one, that because the description in chapter eleven tells exactly what it's trying to amend, to establish that fee, and where it's being amended in, that it would, it's a type of graphic error. It's not a different number and a different street for variance.
And according to Legal? An ordinance, to approve an ordinance of the city of Forestville Texas amending chapter one eleven of the city's code of ordinances, adding section one eleven point ten, implementing an annual two hundred dollar food safety inspection fee, establishing a penalty for failure to comply, and establishing an effective date.
Okay, Councilman Castilla?
Yes.
Councilman Gere?
Yes.
Councilman Gere?
Yes.
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 Okay, now we're going to go on to item F, consideration and action to approve ordinance authorizing exceptions to permitting and administrative fees for political subdivisions of the state of Texas and establishing an effective date. This item was tabled on the August twenty-eighth meeting, just to note that.
All right, now, this is coming back, this was an ordinance that was brought up about working with Wilson County, the hospital districts, any of the other portable subdivisions in the area where if they're going to be doing construction projects and things within the city of Forestville, that their administrative fees, and things like that that are normally paid by construction projects here, are waived in the spirit of intergovernmental cooperation. This does not waive the fees that we have to pay to have the plants reviewed that we ship off, or what's the name of the?
Veritas.
The Veritas, this doesn't waive those fees, so the city's not, not going to be paying for them. They'll have to pay anything that the city would have to pay.
Mr. Ortiz, just recently, in twenty thirteen, if I may, the council approved administrative fee. I believe it's thirty percent on residential, fifty percent on permanent, the city will receive as administrative fee above beyond the permit fee. What this would do, for example, county is doing the courthouse, the city would not receive its administration portion of that fee, but they would pay for all of their permitting fees and cost and plan review orders to that. And it's based on, you need to express, the value of the construction, so...
Yes, it is.
The fee is assessed to the value.
Yes, that is correct.
The bigger the project, the bigger administrative fee the city would be seeing, but in this case, for tax anybody, school districts, county, anybody who is a political subdivision would not have to pay our administrative fee, but all other commercial development would.
Any questions? Any citizens' comments on this?
I have a question. Do we see any programs or any projects that will affect our, our funds from coming?
Projects and reference?
Like the courthouse and all that? Imagine if, if we had waived that fee, would we be short?
No, because this is, this is revenue that has never been, that's never happened before, because we never had an ordinance before, so we wouldn't have a negative impact on our budget, because we never had that fee, it's a new fee. But just to let you know, the county is doing their eight million dollars in phases on the courthouse, because it's losing effect, they pay their administrative fee. They're looking at doing the justice?
The Justice Center.
The Justice Center, because they're doing the demolition, so that's their next phase, so they're trying to hold up on their permit, I think we did some of their site work, so that they don't have to pay that administrative fee. The school right now has a permit in that did a catwalk at the high school, but they had to pay the administrative fee, so they're asking for relief of just their administrative fee, but it's not something that we budgeted for, because we don't know what permits are going to come in. It shouldn't have a negative impact on our budget, because we never received our revenue before. It's a new one, a new one that came, and so, as council said, in order of, we want to have a sense of cooperation, this will help them out, because it is based on the value, and I think the total, it's about eight million dollars is what the county will eventually pay at the end of all their projects, once they're done.
Any other questions? And then, if you need to take a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance of the city of Forestville Texas amending title fifteen of the city's code of ordinances, adding chapter one fifty-five and one eighteen to an exception to permitting and administrative fees for political subdivisions in the state of Texas and establishing an effective date.
Okay, can I get a second there?
My second?
Okay, a motion by Councilman Castilla. Okay, a motion by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilman Nieto, Councilor Rodriguez, how do you vote? Councilman Nieto?
Yes.
Councilman Castillo?
Yes.
Councilman Nieto?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't sit down yet. The next one is consideration of action to approve ordinance authorizing distribution side use of aluminum wiring connections.
Yes, Mayor, and Mayor and Chief Council, both towards the city staff and myself, we were working together on the riverbed in reference to asking for a movement to be changed to our ordinance in reference to copper wire. There's a letter in your package from Mr. William Basset that talks about why they need to have that, and there's also been a correspondence to myself, as well as the attorney from Mr. Dickey in reference to why they're requiring this. We do want to iterate that this does not have anything to do with, once it hits off the distribution, so no housing, no commercial, all of it will be copper wire. What they're talking about is just the distribution end, and they're asking us to change the ordinance, right now it's probably to do copper, they thought that when they're looking at redoing some of their lines, and Mayor, you're more familiar with that than I am, that they're going back to check, some of them they've already done aluminum. And so what they're asking to do is to say that on the distribution end, they're asking, can we change our ordinance to allow them to do copper on the distribution, but when it hits, aluminum, and then when it hits the actual residence and the commercial, it will have to be copper as it is now, but it's just for distribution to allow them. And they've asked that, and there's an ordinance that can amend that for your review.
And we did a little bit of looking into this, because I know there's a bunch of safety concerns about aluminum wiring, and the reason why aluminum's okay for this is aluminum has a lot more resistance in the electrical transmission, so it heats up more, it expands and contracts more than copper does, so if you're in a house where you're flipping on and off light switches, you're going to be causing expansion and contraction, that can cause the wires to come loose, they arc, they spark, they can fire. For the distribution side, those lines are always on, they're, they're not being flipped on and off, the, the power's always going through them, so they're going to maintain their constant expansion level for those transmission lines on the distribution side, and they don't pose the fire hazard that they do in a residence.
So basically what they're asking is, from the meter, from the top of the meter on up?
Yes.
To the, to the distribution service?
Correct.
Not, nothing beyond the, the lower part of the, more, the house?
Correct. Once it hits that part, it's all copper, all the way through, from that point, all the way throughout the house, or commercial, with business, and everything, once it's on that side of the meter, it's all copper.
Is this a common practice?
It is a common practice, and the, here it's the, NAFD has, the National Association of Fire Safety, we looked into them as well, and they approve aluminum wiring on the distribution side as well. So it is a pretty common practice, just because aluminum is cheaper, and when you're running the miles and miles of transmission lines, since it doesn't pose a fire hazard, they approve it.
Is there a savings to the consumer?
That I couldn't tell you, I hope Phelps would have.
Obviously, I mean, there is, because of the cost of aluminum to the cost of, of copper is pretty substantial.
Yes, but the savings would be to Phelps, and it's been up to them to say how they want to do a lot of the savings, but it is a savings purpose to that.
Well, technically, the Phelps, the Phelps wouldn't see the savings, because this is on the, on the customer side as well anyways, so basically, the, the customer is going to have to build their meter loop to where anything in their meter loop is, would be, for from the meter on up would be aluminum rather than copper, so the savings would be the customer's savings, not Phelps', because Phelps is already using a hundred percent cop, aluminum, at this time.
Oh, they're already all using?
For, for the service, yeah, for the service, but not for, within the, within the, from the meter to the, the service, basically, the connection, Phelps' connection.
Okay.
So, so that, that's all they're asking for, is from the top of the meter to pickups and distribution system.
Mayor?
Yes.
Ask me a question. Do, does city code call for homes to have all copper or mixed?
All copper, sir.
Do, outside the city limits, do y'all, do they use?
It is permanent, and, and so in the ETJ, the permit will require copper as well. If we're going to permit anything, we've had recently, or we rejected someone who did aluminum, it has to be copper if we go to permit, and so in ETJ, they're coming in to be permanent, and it has to be copper.
All right, and do you know if other, it's just a question, do you know if other cities utilize aluminum?
Yes, they are, some that do, there are some that do. Phelps would not recommend, they are recommending that we keep the copper for the residential and commercial uses.
Right, but the NEC does recommend copper, I mean, aluminum. Why can't we, is there an ordinance right that, that says only copper, right?
Ordinance has copper.
Okay, I believe we should revisit that, that ordinance and, and get some feedback from them.
Well, in the ordinance itself, it, it adopts the standard code that we use, and the code that the city council has adopted does say copper, and even in the ordinance, it does state that it needs to be copper wire.
Right, but...
The, and NEC is, is basically the, the minimum requirements, and, and it is up to the governing jurisdiction, which is, you know, Phelps says, Phelps for, for the city, for the ownerships.
That is quite saying to revisit this issue, I'm not, right now for or against, I'm just asking, you know, for us to revisit that issue, so other businesses and businesses, homes.
And I can't, the National Association of Fire Safety does strongly advise against aluminum on a customer's side.
But it's not a safety issue.
It is a safety issue, it is, if they're advising that.
It's obvious.
On fires and the safety.
Okay, do we have any citizens' comments on this issue?
I'm going to make the motion to approve an ordinance of the city of Florisville, Texas, amending section one fifty point three two of the city's code of ordinances allowing aluminum, warrant for distribution side purposes, and establishing an effective date.
Can we, a second, can we add a little plug, a little, because I'm, I'm just, distribution side is, is very vague, you know, and I, I feel that, that it needs to be stated that, you know, where the stopping point is, and, you know, I, I, and I'm, I'm not even sure what would be the proper verbiage to say, you know, from the, from the, the, the high side of the, of the meter, or, or the, 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 the top of the Phelps meter, or entry point, something of that nature.
We could amend it, or we can table this and ask someone from Phelps, I don't think there's anybody here from, from Phelps now.
Isn't it stated in the ordinance as such, it's safe for distribution side application, and then about supply side as a constitutional health and safety rule?
Right, but the, the, what Councilman Rodriguez is bringing up is the definition of distribution side, and he'd like a more technical definition.
Yeah, that, that way it doesn't get, this rule doesn't get bent. I mean, I, I, I feel that, that it can go, it can go any direction if we say distribution side. Then I will...
You can table it, and you have?
Yeah.
There's been a motion, you get a...
You have a motion, I'm going to say.
Yeah.
Do you have another?
And second by Councilor Rodriguez. Does the question in the motion, or does the judge have to proceed?
But you can pull this one, right?
Who, who put motion in the other person?
Okay, I have the other motion. If it were the second.
It was, it was.
It was seconded?
Yes.
All right, then with the, no, I actually don't have Robert's rules on me. It's not good, if you can withdraw it once it's seconded, whatever you got. I think that would be the simplest, is to have them to put it down and then you can do that. They're not really blind, girl. Draw a second.
You don't think Robert's blind?
Sure, Terry will mind you, he just wants to hurry up right there.
He feels like he's running right in that.
Come on, Gid, you know you have the answer in your back pocket.
For the board, you know.
Yeah, we can withdraw the second, it'll die for lack of a second, and then we can make it.
He can, he can withdraw, we can withdraw.
You can withdraw your second, you can withdraw your motion.
Mr. Ortiz, Mr. Ortiz would withdraw, and then generate what is...
Or I'm going to have a motion, you're drawing your motion, and then...
Basically, I'm going to backtrack.
Councilor Ortiz, please, give me a second. Thank you.
And then Councilmember, he's withdrawing the motion.
So would this be considered a table?
Now, there would be a motion to table it, shouldn't there?
Mayor, I move to table it.
Second, please.
A second?
No withdrawal?
And a motion to table, and second, Councilman Castillo, who do you vote on that? Councilor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Whatever?
Aye.
Please. Motion carries five zero, table. If you'll put it in the agenda for the next time you have this to be said, or if you do it again.
Uh, who wants to...
Just, just for clarification. Okay, we'll just get to the worry, we've changed the, the ordinance.
In reference to item H, the citizens' committee, I'm requesting that the council take with this issue, mainly because when we did the research in reference to establishing some of these school zones, we noticed it's pretty dated, and we still have the areas that are no longer school zones, still listed school zones, so if you allow us to table that motion, we'll have those things corrected, for example, the administrative building at one time was a school, is still designated or to, or to as a school zone, so if you allow us to make those corrections, I think we can bring that back to you on the December eleventh, so I'm requesting that item to be tabled, please.
Can I have a motion, I said?
I'll make the motion to table, item three H.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll say it.
And a motion to table by Councilor Rodriguez, second by Councilman Nieto, motion, Councilman Castillo?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Nieto?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Now we're going to go on to item three, I, consideration of action to request a speed study for, for State Highway ninety-seven east from Highway one eighty-one to east city limits.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor of City Council, Councilor Rodriguez contacted me in reference to looking at historically what happened the last time we requested TechDoc to look at doing a speed study, and they rejected to reduce that speed. I know there's been some incidents of, of turkey we talked about earlier, as well as an accident in reference to that, we, I believe the secretary contacted TechDoc, and they said they can do it if we request it, they don't know when they're going to get to it, because it was in twenty thirteen that they did the study recently, and they did not warrant a reduction in speed, but Councilor Rodriguez wanted to come forward, I know, Mayor, you've had some interactions with TechDoc as well for discussion, but I believe this was requested by Councilman Rodriguez.
Mayor, is this item relevant to your handout?
Yes, this is today's notice from Senator Sabin's office, update from TechDoc, TechDoc staff visited location and will conduct speed study to determine if speed limit can be lowered, should have results in mid-December, and the interim staff is considering signage to encourage drivers to slow down, so they are working on it.
Is this, is this something that we should work for both ends, you know, both from the top as well as procedurally?
From my experience in working with government, it can tend to start crossing paths, and people say, oh, they're working on it, we'll shove it off to them, so if there is somebody that's dedicated to requesting on direct, and moving forward, but the party is already doing it, but that's, you know, obviously your decision, I don't know how many avenues you'd like to go for.
I'm just, I'm just making sure it, it gets done instead of, like you said, you have the, you know, granted it's coming from, from IRA, and, you know, should be taken care of, but, you know, just for the sake of, you know, procedure, it should be...
Well, because it's written in general, we can move the, I mean, to request it, right? So, so Mr. Turner has the...
I think what is required, if I'm correct, Henry, it is a letter from the mayor?
Yes.
Asking for the study, so that's why it's there.
But from a legal perspective, there's no issue with attacking from out of any approach to going through the state senator's office, going through TechDoc directly, but that's a decision for council.
I don't want them to, I don't want them to get to their table and table, there hasn't been a, a, a speed study requested, you know, or, you know, I mean, I don't want to make a hiccup in the, in the process, so. I have faith that it's going to go through, but, you know, the...
Happening, I think.
It's a little...
But, but the letter that was penned before happened with my predecessor, not myself, it was before I got, but we did get the rejection while I was here.
Can we take action?
I, I, I think just for, you know, for comfort, I think it's still procedural.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
I'm going to make the motion to request a speed study from TechDoc for State Highway ninety-seven east from Highway one eighty-one to east city limits.
A second, ma'am.
Just a challenge, doubling up.
It's not necessarily a tactic.
Raise a motion in a second.
Okay, and a motion, Councilman Rodriguez, second by Councilman Rodriguez, is it due?
Agree.
Okay, Councilman Castillo?
No, it's doubling up on work.
Councilman Nieto?
Yes.
Councilman Nieto?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four, one. Okay, now, we're going to adjourn into executive session, that's for A, adjourn to executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one point zero seven one, to review a public services dumpsters rollout policy, correspondence to mayor enforcement and city policy towards business, management personnel response, direction for implementation, and advice considering possible litigation.
Mayor, I'm going to move to executive session.
Okay, and a motion by Councilman Nieto, may I have a second?
I'll say it.
A second by Councilman Rodriguez, Councilman Castillo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilman Nieto?
Aye.
Councilman Nieto?
Aye.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, the time is eight thirty-seven.